Start the meeting. Alright, thank you. Okay, good evening, everyone, and welcome to September 21st, 2020. Uh, the first digital Zoom meeting of Turner Valley Council in the history of Zoom meetings, I guess. So we'll call the order at 6:31. There you go. So at home on our uh iPads and house computers, we have Counselor Waring, Counselor Hamilton, Counselor Gordon, Counselor Holliday, Counselor Wilkie, and Counselor Raff. Um, you can't see it there, but you will see it on recorded video, so we're all good. Alright, so let's kick off this meeting. With an adoption of the agenda. Can I get a motion? Counselor Raff makes that motion. Uh, for voting purposes, um, please indicate in the video uh with a raised hand or no, and if you want, you can turn on your volume and say yes or nay. Um, it's all recorded, so we will be able to see you. Uh, so we have an adoption of agenda as presented. Uh, all in favor? All opposed? Seeing none, we're unanimous. Excellent. Adoption of previous minutes from September 8th, regular business meeting minutes. Uh, can I get a motion and then any concerns or follow-up discussion? Motion to adopt the minutes. Counselor Deputy Mayor, sorry, Hamilton, uh, any concerns? With the minutes, all good, everything's clear. Seeing nothing, all in favor? And all opposed? And that's carried. Excellent, thank you. Question, Perry. At the beginning of every council business meeting, we have a 15-minute section dedicated to the public to come in and ask questions of council for clarity of purpose, or any of the concerns around town. Uh, Mr. Sharp, have we received any written, uh, verbal, phone calls, emails, any form of, uh, correspondence for a question period seated? Okay, thank you. I did have a discussion with one of our residents regarding some trees. Um, you'll have a follow-up, um, email and/or discussion from that resident, uh, this week. Um, but we won't go into it in detail because we don't have anything to add. So if there is a question brought forward, it'll be at the next meeting, but don't be surprised if you hit a phone call in the next few days. Um, okay, so seeing none and having none, we will move forward. Statutory hearings, we have none. Delegations, we have none. Reports, chief administrative officers report. We have two items there. We're going to hand it over to Mr. Sharp, and he will fill us in. Uh, please keep your comments or, um, clarifying questions to the end, and then we can have him finish up, uh, everyone in due course. Okay, I'll hand it off to Mr. Sharp. Mr. Sharp?
Thank you, Mayor Crane. Uh, three items or two items to talk to you about today. The first one is the Stars of Alberta Volunteer Awards. Uh, these awards are, are provincially awarded, uh, each year to six worthy Albertans uh that recognizes extraordinary, uh, volunteerism and efforts that have contributed to the well-being of the community or fellow community members. This year, I have the distinct pleasure, uh, on behalf of the Town of Turner Valley to advise council that we have proceeded with the nomination for one of our residents, Ms. Maureen Nelson, uh, for the Stars of Alberta Volunteers Awards in the senior category. Uh, many of you know Ms. Nelson, and she's a long-serving community volunteer who shared her time and extensive knowledge in support of the town and its initiatives for the past 15 years. Specifically, her work on the municipal planning commission, the waterworks advisory committee, and parks and recreation committees have had a, a large effect and positive effect on the impacts on the efforts and quality life for the residents of Turner Valley. So this is to let council know that that nomination has gone in, and we eagerly await, uh, adjudication of the process. The awards are typically, uh, handed out during International Volunteer Day, which is December the 5th. So I would suspect that we will hear a notification of the nomination in around the end of November. At any rate, whether Ms. Nelson is awarded a, is handed an award or not, I think the fact that she has been recognized by her peers, and we've pushed the nomination up speaks volumes about the effort she's done for our community. So I'm happy to say that is on its way. The second, uh, quick item I wanted to update council on is, uh, the Still Standing production. As you recall, uh, the folks were in Turner Valley several months ago filming a, a live version of that uh television show. We received word last week that the Turner Valley episode will be airing on December the 1st on CBC. So stay tuned more for that, and as we get any additional information from the CBC, we'll make sure to let residents know.
Excellent, thank you. Uh, counsel, any questions for Mr. Sharp? Barry, you're muted. There you go. That would explain why no one heard me saying, can we get a motion to accept for information? Uh, too funny. Thank you, Counselor Wilkie. Here I am judging you all for not muting properly, right? Okay, uh, okay, any discussion, any questions for Mr. Sharp, uh, before we accept that motion? That would have been what I was talking about when I was muted. Everybody's good? Alright, all in favor? Excellent, and that's unanimous, thank you. Alright, let me just make sure I got everything here. Okay. 7.2 is the Community Services, Dr. Lander Memorial Pool Summary. Counselor Wilkie's favorite topic, the pool. So we'll give it back to Mr. Sharp, and, um, then we can have some comments. Uh, Mr. Sharp?
Thank you, Mayor Crane. Uh, before you is Ms. LeBlanc's update on the pool under the COVID circumstances. I won't go through it line by line, other than, uh, to ask council if they have any specific questions about the report.
Counsel? Any questions? Deputy Mayor Hamilton?
Um, thanks so much for, for the report, um, and to, to staff for getting the pool open for the summer and letting our patrons enjoy it as much as we possibly could. Um, my biggest question on this one was going to be, what does it cost us? Uh, it looks like that's not available until our quarterly report coming, um, next month. So I will eagerly await that report, and, uh, thanks to you and to staff for, uh, again, for opening up the pool and, um, giving some people some much-needed reprieve from the heat this summer. So thanks.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hamilton. Uh, Counselor Wilkie?
Um, my comments were going to be similar on, on cost, but it sounds like that's TBD. Um, I, I do, uh, I do just want to say appreciate us having it open. I mean, um, every time that we were there, it was great. We were having a blast. Um, um. One question, I guess, was, uh, was mechanically, I know we seem to have issues every year between either the spray park and the, um, the pool with, you know, occasional maintenance. I know there was one operational hiccup earlier this year, but if you had to characterize operations of the pool this year and, and how the facilities are holding up, how, how did things go this year on that front?
Through the mayor to Counselor Wilkie, I think overall, things went quite well. We were in hurry-up mode, obviously, to get the pool open, um, on short notice, uh, once we'd made the decision to do so. Uh, we do, it's an aging facility. It needs work. Uh, there's work to the change rooms that need to be done. We've got a couple of water leaks in there we're looking into and, and just u-usual things that would come with a facility of that age. Uh, but I think we're getting pretty good at the opening formula. I know we ran into some snags a couple of year, a few years ago, and a few less last year, or two years ago, and it went very smoothly last year and this year. So, um, nothing out of the ordinary that I would report on, but it is aging, and it's going to need some investment in the years to come.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, Counselor Holliday?
Yeah, I just wanted to state, uh, I was actually really impressed with the numbers. So having it only open eight weeks instead of the 14 like last year, to have almost 4,500 people being able to attend. Um, I was actually thrilled, and I just want to say kudos to the staff for, for, um, all the hard work on that. Uh, I think it ended up better than I was expecting, so.
Thank you for that. Um, Raff, Waring, Gordon, no comments? Okay, excellent. Uh, yeah, I, uh, I really liked the report. Uh, I too would like to see the financial breakdown for sure. That's of interest to me. Um, I'd just point out again that, uh, I think council did the right thing in asking for this pool to be open um, and setting that task to administration. Uh, I don't know if you heard on the radio today, High River just started their wrecked facility uh backup after a six-month hiatus. Um, obviously, they're a much larger operation, but, uh, it just shows how many intricate things need to be considered in order to absolutely deliver a service, uh, under COVID restrictions. And, uh, I think the staff did a great job in hammering out those details and providing that service. So I just want to acknowledge them for the great job they did, and we look forward to having them back next year under much better circumstances. And, uh, I'm sure we will get there as a community and as a country, so. Okay, excellent. Can I get a motion, uh, to accept that for information, please, at this time? And then we'll see the financials in the quarterly report. Uh, Counselor Waring, any further comments? Seeing none, all in favor? That's carried unanimously. Thank you very much. Alright. Alright, moving on, we have 8.1 Administrative Responses. Uh, we have none. Is that correct? Or didn't we have one? No? Okay. Uh, Administrative Inquiries, we have none. And no items under 10, which is bylaws and policies. 11, Old Business. We have notice of motion by Counselor Waring, Friendship Trail Improvement, and Resurfacing. So, uh, Counselor Waring, you can, uh, read that one off. I believe you have it on your digital. I've got it on paper here, so, um, the floor is yours, sir.
I also have it on paper. Um, I'm going to read the motion. The council direct administration to consult with Black Diamond, Foothills County, and other shareholders regarding the possibility and sharing of costs to resurface a portion of the Friendship Trail and further the report outlining the feasibility and cost be brought back to the October the 19th regular business meeting for further discussion.
Okay, excellent, thank you. And that's it, that's, we don't need to vote on that? That's?
We do. We, we have to direct.
That is the motion?
Yeah.
Yeah, so there you go. Any comments, concerns, questions from anyone? Uh, Counselor Holliday?
Yeah, I just wondered what you had in mind for this. I'm actu- I'm totally in support. I think that section needs some work. Um, just wondering, um, where you think, because it's somebody's driveway. It's currently just a road. So we looking at putting an actual paved pathway running alongside it, or resurfacing that driveway? Um, I just wasn't 100% clear, but totally want it looked at. I think it needs to be fixed.
Yeah, the, uh, the map highlights it, but, uh, John, you could clarify if you like.
Yeah, the, the, we, we need really to do a minimum just to guarantee a snow-cleared path uh, through that section of, uh, road. It's, it's part of the original road that ran from Black Diamond to Turner Valley, which when they built the new highway, became the Friendship Trail. Um, so the, the access to the resident that lives up there in the county, it's a gravel, basically a gravel road up to his house. Um, he's got some concerns of what we're going to do, which is why we mentioned about other interested parties being involved in the discussions. Um, I, I walked it, I've measured it, I've looked at it, I've fallen three times in the winter on it. It, it is possible to put a, a, a narrow walkway through there similar to the older walkways, but it might prove in the long term more economical just to pave the whole road. But that's what the, um, the, the, um, Black Diamond, Turner Valley, and the county can look at doing and see what the, um, the feeling is and whether it's worth spending a lot of money or just doing a minimum. I think even a lot of money is not going to be that much, but the minimum might only be something like $5,000 per municipality. It's not a big project.
Thank you, John. Um, yeah, I'll be interested to see if there's some, uh, solid partnerships that might be able to pull out a a real solid win there for, uh, for the safety of that trail for sure. So, uh, that motion was carried. Um, no, we didn't vote yet. We had comments. Anyone else have a comment? Seeing none, all in favor? And that was carried unanimously. Thank you. Okay, moving on. We have, uh, 12.1 Community Support Grant for the Most Beautiful Art Tour in Alberta. Prepared by Ms. LeBlanc. I will hand it over to Mr. Sharp here for comment. Mr. Sharp?
Thanks, Mayor Crane. Uh, we have a community support grant request from the Most Beautiful Art Tour. I think all of council's familiar with this, uh, event. We supported it in the past, and they typically use our money for advancing marketing initiatives in order to increase the number of visitors that pass through our region. They're asking for, uh, $500. It, it meets the criteria of our grant policy, and administration is supporting, uh, a recommendation to approve their ask.
You're on mute there, Barry. So, if I can, so that's fine. Uh, if I can ask a question of our administration through the chair. Uh, I noticed under other sources of funding, there's Town of Black Diamond amount received is 1,500, and that specifies specifically a foot, uh, a photography proj- project. Can you, uh, clarify exactly? I know Ms. LeBlanc's not here, so she might be the one to ask this question of, but I'm curious about the photography project of $1,500 that Black Diamond did for this event. Um, if you have some information on that, I'd like it.
Mr. Sharp, do you have anything?
Yes, go ahead. That's through the mayor. I'm not familiar enough with the, the project that they have. Um, but it involves updating photos. Uh, we can get more details to you if you, if you'd like us to report back.
Yeah, if I may as a follow-up, I would, I would like some more details on this. Um, primarily because I'm just, I'm just curious as to what the library assets would be. I mean, the photography library, what they need these photos for regarding this? Because right underneath that, it talks about how they've joined up with Travel Alberta, providing material for their magazine, and I'm just wondering, I, I'm just missing some coordination pieces that I think are relevant.
Okay. I think we'll bring that back to you for sure. Do you want to do that through, uh, email? And just, uh, get it tomorrow?
Uh, no, I think the, the question was asked publicly, so we owe a, a response at the next meeting.
Okay, absolutely. Alright, uh, any other comments? Yeah, go ahead. You're going to make the motion, Counselor Gordon?
Yep, I'll make the motion that we, um, proceed with the request from administration that council approve the sponsorship of this Most Beautiful Art Tour in Alberta Community Support Grant Request in the amount of $500. And if I can speak to that, I love, I love, I love the art tour. Uh, it's really brought in a lot of tourists to the area already, uh, weeks in advance. I know the Blue Rock Gallery and Tarek Neymar, they were just recognized as well for the, for the, uh, uh, for his gallery and, and the work that he's been doing. So by all means, I fully support this motion.
Excellent, thank you for that. Any other comments? Counselor Holliday?
Yeah, I'm happy to support this. I'm just surprised that it's only Turner Valley and Black Diamond and the Art Tourist Alberta. When you've got MD and Oka Tokes, um, venues on it. Um, that's my only comment. I don't know if anybody's involved with these people and might ask them why they're not looking um, to Oka Tokes and Foothills for some help too, but I'm happy to support it in $500, so.
Excellent, thank you for that. Anyone else? Comfortable, good. All in favor of the motion? Excellent, thank you. I think it's a great little project, and I hope it pulls off fantastically, so. Okay, uh, 12.2. Turning on the Budget Season in Turner Valley. Okay, this is our big discussion for this evening, so we're going to hand it off to Mr. Sharp, who will, uh, direct it off to Crane shortly. Uh, Mr. Sharp, you have the floor, sir. I'm going on mute.
Thanks, Mayor Crane. Uh, as you know, tonight is the first engagement with council uh regarding the, uh, 2021 and 2022 operating in capital budgets. Uh, the intent tonight is to give council a high-level overview of, of where things are trending with respect to the budget process. And I know Ms. Middleton will walk you through a bit of a journey over the next several weeks as we get through our public participation process and, and, um, more detail in, uh, in a business planning package. But, uh, her intent for tonight certainly is just to let you know what we're looking at and highlighting some of the variances from, uh, the previous year's budget.
Ms. Middleton, you, uh, you have the floor, I believe?
Um, okay, thank you and, um, for the introduction, uh, Mr. Sharp. And thank you, council and mayor, for allowing me to begin. I would prefer to call it a marathon rather than our journey, um, going through the budget process. Um, first off, can everyone see my screen? Okay, good. Um, so administration is very cognizant and, uh, the hurdles and challenges that, uh, 20, the 2021 financial process presents, given the economic circumstances with, uh, with the pandemic and the downturn in Alberta. So, um, through that, the information contained in here is just a kind of our starting point. But it gives us a first and initial look at what the numbers are coming out at uh, for the multi-year 2021 and 2022. So I'll take you through high level, what we have so far, um, for the budgeting process. So, turning on the budget season in Turner Valley, a little bit of, uh, funds kind of spin-off of it, uh, we're going to talk a little bit about the 2021 financial plan. We'll do, take a little bit of initial view through the operating side of the budget. Uh, we'll look a little bit at the 2021-2026 capital plan with a focus on, uh, the two years of 21 and 22. We'll talk a little bit about the participation plan, which where administration is expecting is going to be a two-phased approach, and we're going to present that participation plan on October 5th at the next regular, um, meeting. And then we'll talk a little bit about next steps. So the operating budget, we'll talk about the key highlights on the revenue component, and we'll talk about key highlights on the expenditures. Keeping in my, in mind that we're not going down to the business level, we're just looking high level at the expense categories and the revenue categories. We'll talk a little bit about the capital budget, the capital equipment, capital projects, and the program itself, and the justification as to why we're proposing these particular capital items. So we're just a little bit of a high-level comparison, our operating budget 2020 versus budget 2021. Uh, we're seeing an overall deficit, um, revenues are down about 151,000. Uh, and we'll talk a little bit more as to what those items are. Expenses are up about 167,000, um, both represent just under 3%, and then overall, our deficit is sitting at 318,000. So on the revenue side, um, we've attached in your package a notes document, and we are pretty familiar with this package. It's very similar to what we use when we do our quarterly reporting. So while you can follow along if you desire. And so what we're seeing is a couple of big items, especially when we compare 20, budget 20 to budget 21, and then 21 to 22, you kind of see that variance kind of taper off a little bit. So for 2021, um, some of our big variances on the revenue side is absolutely, it's going to be our taxes. So what we generally do in the, in the initial budget review is, is we keep the 2021 tax, uh, taxes similar to what we're going to collect or what we have collected for 2020 actuals. So you'll see that variance represents about a $47,000 decline, uh, from the 2020 budget. Um, the reserve draws, you'll see that one as well. It's a decline of about $32,000, and that just represents, in order to balance the budget in 2020, we had to take money from reserves. And we didn't factor that into the latest numbers for 2020. Um, under sales at Goods and Services, we have a little bit of an up, uh, side there. Our fire department does, uh, significant amount of work and provides a lot of services with the county. So part of that increase is due to that continued work that, that takes place. Uh, as well, uh, we have a little bit of a favorable sale of water. Now, keep in mind that we are going to be doing our annual rate review of the utilities, and that will be coming in future, um, budget numbers. Uh, at this particular moment, we have just basically used what our actuals or what we're predicting we're going to have until the end of the year as far as water sales. Under other revenues, we have a unfavorable variance as well. And in the past years, we've, we've been able to, um, at times gain additional revenue either through some sort of arrangement with a third party that comes in onto our property in, in the town, or does some sort of activity in the town. Uh, we haven't budgeted anything for 2021, part of that being we suspect that there may not be the same level, level of activity as previous years. So, uh, we've, we've bumped that down a little bit. Um, return on our investments. So you'll see that has been hit quite hard as far as our, um, investment income. Um, we have two large GICs that are going to come due within the next three months that we had very favorable interest rates, um, for the last year, which we are, unfortunately, we're not going to be able to lock in at the same level of a rate. Um, I, I'm sure it's not, everyone's quite familiar with what the rates are at. So we're going to see a bit of a decline there. And then as well on license and permits. So we've dropped that down with the expectation that we, we have some minimal, minimal growth, um, as far as permitting. And so we've brought that down to be more reflective of what we're actually seeing in the market. So from a revenue perspective, we're kind of getting a bit of a, and from the expense side, we're getting a bit of a one-two hit. So on the one side, we're getting hit on the revenue, and then when we'll talk further, um, you'll, you can see where we're starting to see also as well some unfavorable variances on the expense side. So I'll go through, um, the revenue and expenses, and then if there's any questions, I'll allow, um, you can ask me some questions if you, if you, uh, if you need to have further clarification.
Okay.
So the expenses by the numbers. Um, so on the expense side, we have, this is a variance report by category, so by business expense. Um, and you'll see where we've, we've seen some, um, unfavorable variances, uh, wages and benefits. So the wages and benefits line not only, um, includes the wages, which we have factored in about a 2.7% increase, but we've also seen some real substantial increases on our benefit program with AMSC. Uh, we've also had some increases in WCB. So both of these programs, well, WCB is, um, basically tied to wages and, and it is tied to, um, any kind of claims. So we did have a couple of small claims, nothing significant, but we're just seeing of small claims, nothing significant, but we're just seeing overall increase in both these programs, both our benefits and our WCB. As well, under that, we have included any kind of extra fees for firefighters that we pay for them. So the wages and benefits, we have it showing at a variance of just over $76,000 from 2020 budget. Under engineering and legal, we have we have a small, we have an increase there as well. And we have increased that to provide some operational support on the engineering side. As well, in 2021 or 2022, we're going to be doing some work at our lift stations. So we've engaged, we're going to need to engage some more additional expertise on the engineering side. So the $16,000 and the $10,000 both represent increases on engineering. Purchases from other agencies. So we have a decline there of $32,000. That's a favorable variance. And that just basically represents, so we were paying for garbage tipping costs, and that particular cost will now be included under our arrangement that we have with the Town of Oketoks under the solid waste program. So you'll see a decline there. Under the vehicle maintenance, we have a decline as well of $14,000. And under equipment, maintenance, and fuel. So both of these costs are declining because of the Town of Oketoks taking over the solid waste. That all of that, those costs are now included under their program. And you'll see that down below in transfer payments. That's where that any of that offset will be located. As well, so our phones, we've gone through the final process with our phones. So we have worked with Telus. We've done a significant amount of work to upgrade. And I have to say, from administration's point of view, it's been worth every dollar. I think we've become, our internet is far more stable within the office, within our facilities have been upgraded. Our fire services has not only a regular landline, but they also have high tech fibers, fiber optics as well. So all of those services are now going to be stable. That cost will be stable, and you see it through to 2022. Those costs will not increase. Under debt payments, so in 2020, at the end of 2020, we will be, we will completely pay off the debenture for the swimming pool. So we'll see some savings there as well. That's the $34,000. And under contracted services, so we have a decline in contracted services. And I think this represents the decrease in the asset management. So the asset management program had $50,000. As well, we had some ups, we had some additional costs on road maintenance. And we did, we're continuing to try and bring expertise in-house. And so part of relying less on a contracted services is we bring that expertise within. So we're we're continuing, we dropped that additional $20,000 as well. So and the last big expenditure expenditure is of course, under transfer payments. And the transfer payments represent two very large, not new payments. The municipal policing certainly is going to be a new requisition. That one is about $54,000. And then we have the Town of Oketoks. And so all of the costs for garbage that were previously being absorbed by the town and would show up under a variety of different lines are now going to be down included under transfer payments. And that cost is going to be about $137,000 per year. And you can see the increase in 2022, that $19,000 variance, that represents the increase in our police requisition because that cost is going to go up from $54,000 up to $82,000. So that is the expense. So overall, the variance there is 166, almost 167,000 in additional expenses. And so that takes our overall deficit to just under $319,000 for 2021. And then subsequently, in 2022, it drops slightly at $306,000. I'll just take you through the last, this last slide, and then we can have a conversation if there's any questions about the operating budget. So key expenditures that we've included in 2021 and 2022, so that are new and are outside what we've previously prior years. We have the requisition for municipal policing. That's 50, just under $55,000 and $82,000 for 2022. We've put in some amalgamation funding and expenses. So we've put in funding of $20,000. That funding we previously, we already have. So that funding is available. And we have offset costs of $25,000. In 2022, we've put in for, and we're hoping that we can get funding of $50,000, and we're going to offset that with $25,000. So we're hoping that through that amalgamation process, we'll be able to apply for some funding to hopefully bring down the expense side. As well, this year, we're doing, we've had to, in 2021, bylaw enforcement has to spend some operating funds to manage some software that's going to be in their vehicles. E-ticketing has been mandated by the government. So in 2021, we have $4,000 of initial setup. And then in 2022, we'll just have some software. And you'll see a capital offset. There'll be a capital component to that. As well, we've put in additional $40,000 for roads. We had a failure of a road in 2020 at Frontenac. And so what happened there was, we had to redirect. So every year, we try and have $100,000 in our roads program just for maintenance and for repairing your roads. And what happened in 2020 was, we basically had to use the majority of that funding on one particular road. So administration has requested that we have additional funding in 2021 to catch up. We talked briefly about the sewer lift station inspections. So that's going to be a 2022 project. And we saw that upside on the engineering services side. As well, planning is intending to complete the bylaw for our off-site levy bylaw, which has been started in 2021. Planning and development would like to complete that. As well, we've put in some additional funds for landscaping supplies to do some tree pruning requirements of $5,000. So that's kind of the overview today as it stands. So as we go forward, just a couple of outstanding items that will be presented later in the financial planning process. So administration's intention is to have the quarterly financial update. For quarter three will be presented to the financial advisory committee on October 13. And then that will subsequently go to council thereafter. And we'll provide the update on the 2020 projections and any additional visibility on actual costs as compared to budget. As well, I talked briefly about the annual utility rate bylaw amendment. The outcome of the review could have a financial impact not yet determined and are not included in the 2021 financial plan overview today. So this is an annual requirement as per the bylaw. And we are already, administration is already starting to work on that project. Administration managed within the limits established in the 2021 financial plan. So within the operating budget guidelines and assumptions, we've identified any additional spending and we've and administration has provided support on all these major operating expenditures. Administration is following the key initiatives that align with the strategic priorities of council as clearly outlined, and where that they're impacted on the budget. Third-party requisition. So we, administration has inserted a placeholder. And as we obtain updated information, we'll insert those updated amounts when known. So I'll take any questions on the operating side, and then we can talk a little bit on the capital side.
Yes, thank you. Okay, council. Counselor Wilkie up first. And so just use your icons. And Ms. Middleton, you could probably go right back to those first two documents, because they're probably going to reference those. And then we'll just jump back forward as we go. Okay, we've got a full lineup of four counselors. Let me see, we've got Wilkie, Waring, Hamilton, and Holiday. So we're going to start with Wilkie. Go ahead, Wilkie.
Thanks, Corinne. So a couple of questions, and maybe I'll try to just knock them off quickly. On the revenue side of things, I just wanted to clarify how how we forecast revenue. So is the assumption that we are holding our mill rate flat and that we're going to then absorb any reductions in? So I guess, are we making an assumption that assessments will be down, and therefore that's resulting in reduced tax revenue?
So I, I am not an expert on assessments. I have talked with our assessor. He doesn't like to make any quick responses. Like, he's expecting that assessments are going to be down. End of June is when they finalize for what 2020 will look like. I did speak with him last week. We had quite a candid and frank conversation. And I think we can expect that they're not going to increase. We are going to see a decline. The magnitude of the decline, we're not sure yet.
Okay. And so I guess the way that you're forecasting taxes in the budget is you're sort of just taking last year's total millions of dollars of tax amount and holding that flat? So then I guess to hit this budget, if we do see a big decline in tax or in assessments, we would need to see an increase in mill rate to actually make all the math go around. Okay. Only other question, well, only other initial question I had was around the the whole garbage thing. And that makes it complicated to compare year over year, I think, here. So one thing that I would love to see come back is just sort of a reconciliation of, you know, we've got $130,000 that's now going into transfer payments. Where did we take money out of? Sort of where, where and exactly what amount came out of each of the categories? I just want to, you know, make sure, are we actually saving money as we hope we would on on this process? And and I'd like to just see that kind of laid out. That would be, that would be helpful as well. So that's, that's all I have for now.
So just to answer through the mayor. So on October 5th, what I would like to do is I can bring back further details and breakdowns of the business units themselves. And that will probably provide you with some additional information as to, and some transparency over how the garbage looks with the joint arrangement with Oketoks.
Okay, thank you. That'd be great. Okay, did that clarify your concerns? Pat, start here, Wilkie, and then we'll move on if you're good. Okay. Okay, Councilor Waring.
So as we cannot have a deficit budget, I go to assume during our next sessions, we're going to look at how we can get rid of the $318,000 of deficit that we're showing at the moment. Is that correct?
So through the mayor, you are correct, Counselor Waring. This is definitely, absolutely our starting point. It just opens up the floor to get some dialogue going.
So I can sleep tonight, then?
Maybe more than me.
All right. Anything else, Counselor Waring? You're good. Okay, Deputy Mayor Hamilton?
Thanks so much for this, Corinne. I think that Jamie and John have kind of already, you know, said what I was, what I was interested, the transfer payments for the Oketoks garbage collection. That to me, I'd really like to see what we paid versus what the anticipated transfer payment is. So I love that we're going to see that when we look deeper into the business units. And that is, you know, the 5.6% that we're missing. That's so scary to me. I think that the formula that we've worked on in the past was every $50,000 equated to 1%. Was that right? Or was it 0.5%? I can't remember.
Just to address Counselor Hamilton through the mayor, as far as a tax perspective?
Yes.
So every 1%, we get 30,000, just over $30,000.
1% is $30,000. Okay. Okay, yeah, I guess we're gonna, this is our first look. So I guess we don't need to delve too deep into it tonight. But, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna need to get creative here. This, this economy is, is tight. It's tough. People are struggling. And I know we've done a really great job of holding the line for three years. But holding the line for three years with a 5.6% increase on year four is not something that I think that our, our community is going to have an appetite for. So Corinne, I thank you very much for your presentation on this. And it's laid out very clearly for us. And look forward to how we can, how we can try to find some, some cash.
Okay, thank you, Deputy Mayor Hamilton. Next, we have Holiday, then Rad. And then, so Holiday, you're up.
Yep. Yeah, my comments got covered on the garbage absolutely before we know whether the pilot was a success, having that broken down. Be fantastic. And I just want to say thank you for breaking out, making it more clear, the transfer payments to other agencies instead of being lumped in materials and supplies. That was a recommendation of the finance committee, and that's helpful. So thank you for doing that. And I, yeah, I'll echo Lana that I'm looking forward to more conversations on this. Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Mr. Rad, then Gordon.
Thanks very much, Ms. Middleton. And I was following up on what other counselors have already said. And that is about transfer payments. I thought that our agreement with with Oketoks with respect to garbage was a pilot project. So I'm hoping to, to see the numbers. I'm hoping to see the numbers. I think our product project went till December. So I'm hoping to see the numbers. I think we've, we've addressed that. And it's got to be, we gotta see a financial breakdown to see if it's advantageous for us to continue on. And also, the deficit of 318,000 is quite scary because if $30,000 per percent is about a 10% increase in taxes. So we need, still need to do some serious work in coming up. Thanks anyway.
Thank you, Counselor Rad. No, no feedback on that one. Counselor Gordon?
Yeah, thanks so much, administration, for the work you've done here, Corinne. Much appreciated. Question I have regarding the estimation for the amalgamation expenses. Now, obviously, I think it's part of our Q and A that's online. We're expecting a much higher expense for amalgamation. So I'm just kind of wondering why we're only estimating for 2021 such a low expense of only $25,000?
So to address your question through the mayor, so Heather and I sat down and we went through some of the numbers initially. I, I have to follow, I'd have to follow up and just, because I haven't been involved in the amalgamation expenses, the process itself. So we've put some placeholders in there. But we'll continue to try and nail down what that potential amalgamation cost might be, and if we have to add additional funds there.
Yeah, thanks so much. I think that we need to have that on our radar for sure. Thank you.
We'll go to Mr. Sharp. I think he has a little more information here for you, Counselor Gordon. Mr. Sharp, if you could respond to that one as well. Under the amalgamation costs.
Sure, thanks. I'm getting a little bit of echo just to ask everybody to stay muted. With, to Counselor Gordon's question, what we're projecting is only what we know right now. I mean, I think there will be other expenses that will emerge, Counselor Gordon. But right now, But right now, uh, one of the things that we're planning for is the cost for the facilitator to help us with the negotiations. So if we're able to get a better handle on any, you know, additional expenses during this budget process, we'll make sure to bring those forward. But right now, that's the only one that uh, when we look into our crystal ball, we knew for certain at this stage.
Okay, thank you. Uh, follow up, councillor Gordon, before I go to deputy mayor Hamilton.
No, that's perfect. That clarifies for me exactly what that's expense may be, which would have been the follow-up question. So thank you, Mr. Sharp.
Excellent. Thank you for that, councillor Gordon. Uh, deputy mayor Hamilton.
No, I'm good. I just must not have lowered my hand. Sorry about that, Mayor Crane.
Very well. Um, I have uh, just a couple of questions. And again, I know business cases are going forthcoming, so uh, we won't go down any rabbit holes. Uh, first of all, I totally agree. I want to see a breakdown on the um, uh, garbage, just like everyone else. Um, the 40,000 ultra and above for the roads. So is that indicating then that we're going to carry 140 this year? Because you're just showing 40 on this sheet. But is that assuming there's still the other 100? So maybe that's for, no, that would be for you guys. You guys might have talked about that. Um, so yeah, are we gonna carry 140 or is, what are we at?
So just to address your question, uh, yes, absolutely, we're gonna carry 140. So I, I think our public works um, does a really um, good job of making sure that we can um, extend the life of our roads. And so the program that Craig Beaton and company have, I think it will extend the life of the road. So because of what happened this year in 2020 with Front Mac, we, they've added the additional 40,000. So there's 140,000 there.
Okay, thank you. Um, and the e-ticketing, I noticed we have got roughly $8,000 in there. Um, is the province um, supplying any funding for that or is that totally borne by the rate pair?
Uh, so the entire cost is being absorbed by the rate pair. Uh, we haven't received, I mean, other than we could use our MS, well, we can't even use MSI funding for it because it doesn't meet the threshold dollar-wise, but we could use one of our funding mechanisms that we get from the government.
Okay, excellent. Um, not listed here, but of interest, of course, is our favorite topic, recycling. So we won't go down that rabbit hole, but will that be something that we uh, can discuss in the next phase uh, as a business case? Because we do have the presentation coming from Okatoks on their final numbers of the pilot. And with that, we were requesting uh, their recycling numbers and their program and what those costs might implement. So um, is that going to be coming in that business plan as well?
I'm gonna defer that to uh, Mr. Sharp. He put his hand up.
Yep, absolutely. Sorry. I'm, I'm staring at my little screen. So uh, yeah, absolutely. We'll defer to uh, Mayor Sharp and Mayor Sharp. That's next career. I'm just reading mine. Um, we'll go to CAO Sharp and then I have one more comment after that and then we're gonna go to councillor. So, Mr. Sharp on recycling, please.
So Mayor Crane, thanks for the opportunity to clarify. I think I'll, I'll pull the garbage pilot in with your question on recycling. So just backing up the garbage pilot. So we are three full months into the garbage pilot. It's going according to plan. The costs are very close to what Okatoks had projected they were, but as we said right up front, the, the only variable in the, the transfer payment, if you will, would be in tipping fees. So they base the estimate in the monthly charge that we are being charged based on average, long-term average tipping fees. And if that was to change, like say there was a pandemic and everybody was staying home and doing yard work, um, then they would just pass the additional costs on to us for that. So there may be a little bit uh, on that and a little extra charge, but the $14 a month that they're charging us for the pilot program has been bang on. We won't see the full cost and the full report until sometime in December. The, the pilot project ends in November. We'll, we'll push them to get something to us in December. Uh, but I can tell you whether that report comes in from a cost perspective or not, we're right on track. Okay? Uh, secondly, around recycling, if that report and a decision on whether we enter into a pilot or a permanent garbage collection project with Okatoks and Black Diamond would likely happen in the new year. So the budget you see is based on the assumption that council likes what they see and we're gonna go forward with that. Of course, if you guys choose not to, we can adjust the numbers on the budget. Uh, but the conversation around recycling likely would happen into 2021, knowing we wouldn't make a decision until late 2020 on garbage. At least that's how I envision it going. So if there was um, changes to how we collect recycling, I would suggest that that would just be a, an in-year budget adjustment that we would do. And we can make those changes on the fly uh, as we do with our typical variance reports.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. And one last one, Ms. Middleton. Um, for the revenues, obviously we know we're down. Um, how are we looking in terms of straight to January? Is, is it, is this what we're looking at in the deficit window here? Um, I'm just looking for actuals and I'm not seeing the actual. Like, it's a projection, obviously, but I mean, the pool is taking us down, uh, there's extra expenses. So yeah, you know what? That's just a fluffy bizarre question. Don't worry about it. We're obviously down.
So just to address your question through the mayor, we have, we do have uh, year-to-date actuals in here and we'll have the quarterly update shortly. Um, I, I'm suspecting that there are some expenditures that are down. Um, so, and yes, some of the revenues are down as well, the pool being one of them, but um, so I think you're gonna see that there, there are some decreases both up on the revenue side and on the expenditure side.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll wait for the quarterly report. That'll give us some facts. Um, okay, excellent. Um, I've got councillor Wilkie and then I noticed deputy mayor Hamilton laughed really hard, so maybe she wants to speak after her, or maybe not. Okay, good. All right, Wilkie, uh, you're up, sir. And uh, after that, we're gonna move on to uh, second part of this presentation. Go ahead, Wilkie.
Yeah, I'll uh, I'll try to keep this brief. I, I did want to welcome the new participant to the meeting. I, I didn't notice earlier, but, but our mayor's goatee grew some wings, it looks like, since the last meeting that I saw him. So, so I wanted to welcome the new beard, but uh, but uh, I uh, I also just wanted to ask on the um, wages and benefits side of things. And, and I don't want to go down the rabbit hole today, but I did just want to ask, you mentioned that there is some big um, discrepancies with WCB and, and, and benefits. Will the kind of detailed um, group level discussion include, like, kind of break out what the differences are on those fronts? I'm assuming that's the case. And I think I'm seeing Ms. Middleton nodding on that front. So um, so that would be great. And uh, and yeah, obviously, we've got to sharpen our pencils because I always think about it, instead of in terms of percentage increase, I like to think about it as dollars per average household and $318,000 is $290 a household. Um, so we got some work to do.
All right, thank you for that. Uh, quick comment, uh, Ms. Middleton, and then we'll move on. Actually, why don't you comment and move right into your second phase.
So through the mayor, thank you all. Those were absolutely great questions. Um, all of them are things that are on our radar. So we're aligned as far as uh, is what we're looking at and how the information is gonna look. So when we come, when administration comes back at the next council meeting, we'll have a further breakdown of all of the various business units and we can just dive further on into the, to some of the additional information. So moving forward to some of the capital. Um, so uh, our capital program for 2021 to 2022 and 2022, um, really, we're trying to address some of the needs, the infrastructure needs of the town. There is really not a lot of new items. Most of the items that are included in, within the budget and, and the plan are, they're definitely projects that we've seen before. So we have a couple of new ones that we've added in. Um, but uh, for example, we have um, in Okaltta, there's a road turnaround that uh, we're looking at doing and that's about 80,000. Uh, for 2021 for capital equipment, uh, the fire services group is uh, would like to do a diesel exhaust capture system. And of course, um, we talked about the software licensing cost for the municipal enforcement. There's a $15,000 cost to install that equipment, 7,500 in each vehicle. As well, we're gonna replace the plow for our one-ton truck and um, the lift station project as well. As the other thing we have um, within that budget is um, is paving for the um, the municipal office in the back. I'm, I'm sure most of you are familiar with the interesting um, the interesting curves and um, different types of paving we have back there. So this is just a bit of a summarization. So for 2021, we have Sunset Boulevard, Boulevard on there. We've made, basically completed most, a lot of the engineering work and the budget's coming in at about, looks like about 3.9 million. Uh, we're on the second year of our three-year program for our sewer and our storm infle-infiltration investigation. As well, we've uh, will be on the second year of our three-year program on our waterline pressure testing. Uh, in 2022, we, administration uh, is looking at a lift station upgrades program. So we've talked about this in length in, in our budget deliberations last year. And so this is um, uh, there's three or four lift stations involved in that program. As the, as well, we um, we have a $25,000 investigation and um, that's a three-year program. And we have the waterline pressure testing and that's the third year of the three-year program as well. On roads for 2021, we have no significant road projects. Uh, in 2022, we have a new one, two new projects that have been added. That's the Okaltta turnaround and the town office parking lot. And then for 2021, we've put in the pathway parks and recreation, the $100,000 for both of those years. And um, you know, they, they could represent a variety of different projects, trail connections and Arrowhead Park. And then 2021 for fire services or equipment, we have, it's the last year of the five-year program for our SCBA equipment. So that project will actually move forward in 2022. Um, and then we have the diesel exhaust capture system, which was 75,000. The municipal enforcement project, which is the e-ticket software that, and that equipment needs to be installed in the vehicles. And then the plow blade for the one-ton truck. And this just gives you a little bit of a summary of not only what we're planning for '21 and '22, but going forward into '26. So our intention is prior to the end of the budget deliberation, you'll see all the way up to a 10-year program. But we have the five years or the six years here for um, for council to take a look at. Um, as, as stated, a lot of these projects have been on, um, they were on the previous uh, capital program. Uh, some of them have been pushed out a little bit further. And um, and then we have a couple of new ones that have been included. So, you know, we talked, we talked a lot in length in 2020 about Sunset Boulevard. So um, we have an indication of what that cost is gonna be. In 2020, we had it pegged at about, 2019, when we discussed it, we had it about 4.4 million dollars. We're coming in at about 3.9. Um, as we begin, we begin to go down and, and complete the, the engineering study, we get more accurate, more accurate costing mechanisms. So uh, we, we're able to insert it in the budgets. And there we have the lift station project that we're um, planning for 2022. So we have um, three, three fourth lift stations involved in that particular program. And we have the parks and rec, which we've put that in as a long-term. Um, if we can develop a program where we put 100,000 in each year into reserves, it would give us the capability to um, when we have new projects, we would be able to have a funding mechanism available. So as you can see on the capital side, we have over the next six years, about 12 point, just under 12.4 million dollars worth of projects. In 2021, we have four, just, just under, just over 4 million. Most of that is related to Sunset Boulevard. And then in 2022, we have about 740,000. Our capital equipment, we talked about the capital equipment requirements. Uh, for 2021, we're looking at about 129,000 for our equipment program. In 2022, we have no um, equipment um, requirements. We, in, in last year's budget deliberations, we had the garbage truck in there. We've taken that out with um, with the expectation, since in our operating budget, we've, we've assumed that we're going to continue on with the solid waste program. We've not included the garbage truck, which is a, was a joint cost initiative with Black Diamond in our budget. So any questions on the capital components?
Okay, councillor Waring. You're good.
I, I pressed the wrong button. Too many of these things. Um, when we, don't talk too much about amalgamation, but we are talking about amalgamation and um, some of these projects, such as repaving the um, car park at the office, might not, it might seem to many people to be a waste of money if in two, two and a half years' time, uh, we don't have an office anymore. Um, and I, I'm looking forward to when we get into these discussions, that we take into account the impact on the capital budgets and the long-term planning with regards to amalgamation. Um, and yeah, until, until we get down into the deep detail, detail, deeper detail, thank you for this um, information and it gives us a lot to chew on before our next meeting.
Thank you, councillor Waring. Uh, we have uh, Holiday, Rab, Wilkie, then Hamilton. So we're gonna go to Cindy right now. Uh, councillor Holiday.
Yep, a couple of questions. Um, I, maybe I'm missing it, but I can't find West End uh, the upgrade. That's a significant capital project that we know is coming up. Um,
So through the mayor.
Just hold on, just let her finish here first. And then Rab can comment on it uh, next. Go ahead, Cindy, finish up.
Absolutely. Um, and then where the SoCal to turnaround, that's all acreage developments down there. I'm just wondering what the turnaround is and where it is, and what the need is for it.
Okay, you did blink it a little bit. So we got the Okaltta part. There was something before that other than West End?
Oh, yeah. So West End, how that's gonna tie in, the asset management plan, where the status of that project and how that's flowing into these numbers. Um, and then the Okaltta turnaround, what the location, like, it's a bunch of acreages down there. I'm just wondering what that is.
Excellent. Perfect. We got it all now. Okay, so Rab can comment on uh, your West End afterward. Um, so Corinne, if you could hit the other two.
Okay, so to address your questions through the mayor, so councillor Rab is gonna talk about West End?
Unless you have an answer, go ahead.
Um, so from an accounting perspective, um, the West End is gonna flow through like a requisition. So it's not our capital project. So the capital project belongs to West End because we don't own those assets. So it won't be on the capital side for, for um, the town of Turner Valley's um, for our um, presentation purposes from a financial perspective. So I'm a, I, I'm, I would expect that probably one of the councillors that is on the committee could provide an update. But um, it wouldn't be on our capital radar. But it wouldn't be on our capital radar. As far as Ocalta, so my understanding on Ocalta is that we need to widen the existing road allowance. We have a resident property that that we are using part of, it's, a road is encroaching on their property. So they have approached, that particular resident has approached us about the encroachment. So we have vehicles such as garbage and vehicles like that that are, that are on that property. And so they've approached us about an alternative to fixing it. And then the third, oh.
Go ahead, asset management was the other question? Where that comes from.
So to address the asset management program through the mayor, we're working on that. And we have been able to gather some very good information. I think what administration has discovered through the process is that our infrastructure, a lot of our infrastructure above ground is in quite good shape. So from that perspective, what we are seeing in the capital program processes is we, there are projects that we're going to be able to push out and we won't have to address them in the immediate future because they have been assessed and deemed that they have extended life.
Okay, thank you. Any follow-up on that, Councilor Holiday, before I move on?
Yeah, just on the West End, I understand that it is West End's asset and so it's not our capital asset. But if we know that we have a major cost coming up, understanding how that's going to flow through to residents and what the impact it is on their annual tax or utility bill or however it's going to end up, it would just be nice to have that heads up well in advance. So I just like that discussion to be added somewhere along this budget process as more information is coming. It doesn't need to happen tonight, obviously, but it needs to happen. So it's, we're totally clear to residents what's going on.
We'll get a quick comment out of Rab next, along with his questions, but I'm sure we'll have that outlined here through the process. So totally hear you. All right, Councilor Rab, if you could address that first and then move on to your questions.
Thank you very much, Mayor Crane. I think Ms Middleton asked, answered that question quite good as far as West End is concerned. West End is a commission and as such, we're able to borrow money for that project. As far as knowing exactly what it's going to cost, we still aren't there yet because it hasn't been fully approved and and fully funded and we're not exact sure exactly much it's going to cost. But the impact it's going to have on both communities is that we're going to, our transfer payments are definitely going to go up. So I'm not sure we can give you that exact amount. Councilor Waring might be able to answer that, but I'm thinking not yet. Because it is a debenture and it's going to be debentured over 10 or 20 years. And, you know, I say we have lots of things yet to make decisions on, but it will not be on our, it's not on the town of Turner Valley capital project. It is a commission's capital project. Okay, my question for Ms Middleton is this diesel exhaust recapture project for seventy-five thousand dollars. I don't know anything about that. I'd like to, I'd be interested in knowing that. And I'm thinking if that's something to do with green, there's got to be some federal funding in that because seems to be true, likes the green projects. So if it's a diesel recapture, then maybe their exhaust recapture, perhaps there's some money in it for us. So I'd like a bit of clarity on that diesel exhaust recapture program.
Okay, thank you for that, Councilor Rab. Comment, Ms Middleton?
Yeah, so to address Councilor Rab's question through the mayor. So what my intention is, is the next discussion that we have, I can present the TCA, so the tangible capital asset justification documents for review. And you'll get a very fulsome look at what that equipment is and what its intention is. And I agree, there, there's always some funding, it seems, for anyone with fire services and emergency in their, in their repertoire. So we will search for that funding.
Excellent. Thank you. Any further comment, Councilor Rab, before I move to Wilkie?
No, thank you. Thanks very much. I'm good. Thanks. I'm waiting that report. So by explaining the West End. I hope the West End answers are adequate for now.
It'll be forthcoming, shall we say. Okay, thank you for that. And thank you to you and Councilor Waring for sitting on that narrowing down the dollar. So, Councilor Wilkie, you're up.
Yeah, thanks, thanks again, Corinne. Appreciate that. A couple of questions, I guess, just trying to understand the consistency between operating and capital, capital budgets here. So I know that we have Sunset as a combination of debenture financing and reserves. Sorry, debenture capital, debenture and MSI, right? So the debenture portion would have a cost associated with it, although I know interest rates are really low right now. There's got to be some cost associated there. Is that not reflected in the operating budget right now?
So to address your question through the mayor, so Councilor Wilkie, I'm expecting that the, that won't impact till 2023. Because that project will happen in 2022 and we can't actually even apply for debenture funding until we have an exact cost. And then we can look at what the overall impact could be on 2023. So what you might see is you might see some, a little bit of uptick in debenture payments in 2023. And I agree, the funding, right now, debentures are pretty inexpensive as far as cost. So when we look, when we begin to go down that, that path, once we finalize all the funding, we can determine what the best mechanism as far as balancing between MSI and debenture.
Okay, thank you. That's, that's very helpful. So there is no cost in there currently. The other place that I was interested in the interaction is we have a hundred thousand dollars a year for Parks and Rec, which, you know, I'm a, I'm a big proponent of for sure. Now, the idea I think that I heard was that we're going to kind of establish a reserve for a hundred thousand dollars a year of, of, of funding. And then if it's lumpy, we can kind of save things up. Where's that hundred thousand dollars come from, I guess, in the first place? Is that reflected in the operating budget side of things?
So to address your question, so we have some, we could move reserve, we could move it from one reserve account and establish a new reserve account and then establish that in year one. But then I think after that, we're going to have to find a home on the operating side to fund that particular reserve on a long-term basis. If that's the intention to build a reserve account, we're going to have to find that money in either an operating or we're going to have to use another capital. We could use an MSI capital funding mechanism to move it into a reserve fund.
Okay, so not on the operating side right now, but we'll have to find it. Okay. And last thing, I do want to, I think I've requested this before and I assume it'll come when we go into a little more detail on, on the operating side of things. I know I'm kind of blurring the lines here, but I'm thinking of both. Just that police requisition, do we have any more clarity on how that's actually going to be handled? And, you know, my perspective is I would, I have a strong preference for seeing that as a separate line item on the, my tax bill that I see every year. That's my perspective, is that this is something that's being imposed by a different level of of government. Is that how this would appear, something along the lines of what our education requisition shows up on, on the, on the tax bill? Or do we not have clarity into how that's actually going to be collected and how residents will also see that, that charge as well?
Thank you. I'm going to go to Mr Sharp for the answer on that one. Thanks.
Thanks, Councilor Wilkie. The short answer is we don't have clarity. The longer answer is many municipalities would love to show that as a separate line item on their tax bill for obvious reasons. I mean, it's not anything our council has been in control of and it's been downloaded by the province. However, when that was initially raised, if you will, to the provincial level, the province had very strong opinions about what should be going on in our tax bills and what shouldn't be. I think they felt that it might have been a form of dirty pool, if you will, if we were going to do something like that. So we haven't ruled that out. We haven't been told we shouldn't do that. But I know many, I would say every municipality our size is eager to show that as a separate line item. So it's not lost on us.
Okay, thank you. Follow up to Wilkie, last one or any else?
I'm all good. Thanks.
Excellent. Deputy Mayor Hamilton, you are our final peg.
Thanks. I'm, I just wanted to follow up on something that Councilor Wilkie just mentioned. I was looking at the AUMA resolutions list and it's really interesting. There's, there is a resolution regarding education portion of taxes and, and the province, or the idea of the province collecting those requisitions themselves. And I think that would be very interesting to see where that goes. And I think police costing going the same way. Wouldn't that be nice if the town didn't have to collect those costs and, and transfer those funds? But that's completely outside of our budgets, but I did think it was kind of interesting to see that resolution coming. I had a question regarding our 2019 projects that were put on hold. For example, Gooding Lane. So no, that's not in our 21 list because it, or sorry, 2020 list, because it was approved in 2019. Funds, of course, are going to be allocated in 2020. I was just curious, is that just to straight carry forward anything that we approved in our 2019 budget that didn't get completed yet and will carry forward into 2020? Are those funds just carried into the next year?
So to address your question through the mayor, so Councilor Hamilton, so how Gooding Lane worked was we actually didn't have it on as an approved project, but when we received the funding from the MSP, we brought it back and we approved it at the last meeting or the meeting before. So it is a 2020, it's considered a 2020 project and therefore it's not showing up on this, on this capital plan. With respect to any other projects that have been approved and have been carried forward, they will not show up on the plan, but they are still carried forward on our, on our books. We still make sure that we account for them.
Okay, for clarification, you just said it is a 2020 project?
Yeah.
Oh, then should it not be on the list then?
No, because we're just looking at 21 and 22. And 21 and forward.
Oh, sorry. Okay, got it. Okay, then I had one other quick question. When we have our next look at the, the budgets, can, would it be possible to get updates for our reserve account balances?
So through the mayor, so that's perfect segue to go through the next steps if, if we would like.
I think we're there. So you lead right into that with Deputy Mayor Hamilton's question. That sounds great.
So next step, so on October 5th, administration's going to come back with a, we, we're going to come back with a two-phase public participation plan. And how, how that is expected to roll out is we are hoping to go with two particular components, one being a bit of a survey, very high level, and really having that conversation with our, with the residents about, okay, where, where are residents at and who's been impacted? And, and so we want to get more visibility on, on how our residents are feeling financially. And then from there, we're going to, we're going to provide another update on operating and capital if new information becomes available. So there's been requests and there's been questions that have come out this evening. All of them, we have the information available. So we'll bring that back and those answers back and, and we'll be able to provide, you know, another second level discussion. On October 19th, we'll bring, bring back the breakdown by business unit. And so there's been a request for that. So we'll make sure that we have that available. As well, we'll have a recommended funding sources for capital projects. And we'll provide a reserves, reserve update. So the initial reserve update, we're going to have a discussion with the the finance advisory committee on October the 13th. They'll get to have a view of it and then it'll come to council thereafter. And then will it continue to address the inquiries from the initial information? So I've, I've put together a list of, of the questions that have come forward this evening. And as we have information available, and certainly these, these dates aren't carved in stone. So I'm working behind the scenes and then the finance team is working behind the scenes to get you the information as quick as possible so that we can make those informed decisions. And one that we can give the residents something to talk about. So the more we can, we can provide for council and for the residents, the, I think the probably, the more engaged we'll get residents on the public participation plan. So that concludes my discussion this evening. I thank you so much for taking the time to discuss the finances. I know sometimes it's not everyone's favorite topic, but I'm confident that working together with the administration and council and the residents that we're going to have a really good financial plan process and we're going to have a really good dialogue going through for the next 10 to 12 weeks.
Excellent. Thank you. I have Councilor Holiday up for a quick question here before you slide off. And thus far, I'm very impressed at what I'm seeing. So this is good. Go ahead, Councilor Holiday.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask for next time we talk about capital to get a little bit of information on how the sewer infiltration investigation and the waterline pressure testing went this year. It was my understanding last year when we approved those projects, they were going to look at the worst, you know, the oldest areas first. And just curious as to, you know, whether those were good investigations worth our time and money. And if they've turned up things, that would be good to know about. Just because hopefully we pinpointed some things. So that'd be great to have.
For sure. Yeah, we can make sure that happens.
Okay, anything else from council? Any, anything you want, a little extra peek in? I mean, obviously, we're going to have business cases coming. We'll probably spark a few of our ideas then as well. So we can just wait for that one and we'll be fine. But I have two, I have Councilor Holiday again and then Councilor Gordon. Councilor Holiday, you're up.
No, I just forgot to lower my hand.
Okay, Councilor Gordon, you're up.
Yeah, a question I'd like to see us kind of clarify with a business case would be the amount that is set aside for conferences and training for the upcoming year. With the restrictions on, that we still endure with COVID, I'd really like to see a solid business case for, for having that.
Okay, noted?
Yeah.
All right. Anything else, council? Okay, seeing none. And with the discussions and questions that we asked have been noted. So that'll come back to us with more information. I believe I'm looking for a motion to adopt that for information at this time.
Motion, Mayor Crane?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Any further? Oh, Waring was going electronic. Did you want to comment, Waring? Pretty good.
I just raised my hand to make the motion in accordance with the instructions, but that's okay, Councilor Hamilton can do it.
All right, sounds good. All right, seeing no further, raising of the hands, all in favor? Excellent. Thank you. Back to the agenda. Okay, thank you, Ms Middleton. I believe you can sign off for the evening now. Is that right, Mr Sharp? She's good to go. So thank you, Ms Middleton, for tuning in and all of us have a great week.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, that's 12.2 taken. That was good discussion, guys. Thanks for all your comments. Okay, that's 12.2 taken. That was good discussion, guys. Thanks for all your comments. Moving on to general correspondence, we have none. And then correspondence action considered, we have the Dare Works Foothill Society request for support. So let me just follow through my little paperwork here. If I could get the motion, it supports such a fantastic little program. Councilor Waring?
I don't see a written motion, but I'll make the motion that, oh, I'll put my speaker on. Oh, no. I'll make the motion that council agrees to support the DARE Works Foothill Society in the amount of, I believe it's $500. Oh, no, it's an amount per head of $30.16 per student at the school.
Yeah, with approximately 25 to 30 students, so. I think it's grade six. Counselor, thank you for that motion. Councilor Waring, Councilor Halliday, you're up.
Yeah, I'm actually not in support of this. I think Turner Valley didn't even request having this program last year. I've talked to my husband as an administrator and he actually thinks that teachers can do just as good of a job with the curriculum because they have the relationship with students as bringing in outside members of, I mean, I guess it's great for the visibility for the RCP and all that, but they don't have somebody in the position. It's, I think this is an old program that's kind of gone by the wayside. So I think there's better things that we can do with this money. So I'm actually not in support of it, especially since Turner Valley hasn't, you know, isn't even asking for it.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? I will say that I do support drug and abuse resistance education. I understand exactly where you're coming from at that point as well, though, Councilor Halliday, that educators have that tight relationship. I am reading this last paragraph. It says, finally, we would like to let you know that we will not be sending invitations to our stakeholders to attend our AGM. So that's to their AGM due to the possible ramifications of COVID-19. We do not think it wise at this time to engage guest speakers in order to fill our small meeting with guests. I'm going to let, let me see. I've got Cindy Atlanta up. So I, I'm totally in favor of supplying funds to help prevent any kids from getting some bad habits at an early stage, giving them as much awareness as possible. I think that can be compounded as well by the teachers, but I find there's value myself in having a uniformed officer come in there and lay it on the line. My thoughts. I'm going to go Lana, Wilkie, Rad, Waring. And Deputy Mayor Hamilton, you're up.
Would we not be able to say that we support the program if the school requests that they present? It does say that the school did not request delivery of the program in 2019, 2020. So my question to administration would be, do we, are there any funds lost to the town if the program doesn't run? Or are they only asking for support in the event that the program does run, that school asks them to attend?
That's a great question. Todd, would you like to try that one? That might be something we have to go and get an answer to and bring back. But Todd, maybe.
So there, our funding of the program would be conditional on whether the program in fact runs. And the way I read their request, they're waiting to find out if the schools are asking in fact to have the program.
Okay. Is that good? Deputy Mayor Hamilton, the follow up? Okay, Wilkie, you're up.
Yeah, I was just going to echo what I think our deputy mayor said better than I will. I'm more than happy to support the program if they request it. I don't necessarily support just sending them, prepaying for passes or whatever that might be, but but I, I'm absolutely supportive of the program. I just, yeah, if they want it, I would be there to support it.
Okay. Rad?
Thank you very much. I do support this program and yes, it's been around for a while, as Councilor Halliday said. But I, when I read that letter, I really didn't see a request for money. I mean, you ask for support, but I, you know, it wasn't really a clear request that this is what we want you to do. And there's no commitment from the school division that I can see. The school itself already hasn't asked for the program this year, didn't run it last year. And if you talk about, as, as Councilor Halliday said, you know, we don't need to get somebody off the street, you know, to provide this when you have teachers in the building, especially this year, because COVID is a factor. And when you bring somebody up the outside, you're obviously increasing your chances of, of transmission. So you know, I, I'm not opposed to this letter, but I, I'd like to put it in hold until we get an official request because I'm not, I don't really see it that way personally.
Okay, thank you. Waring?
Have to take my hand down. Hang on. All the speakers up to date have basically said what I was going to say. Not to repeat again, the, the thing is, in a, in a reply or a response to this letter to Laurie McCurry-Berg, we could indicate that if there is a request from the school to feel free to come back to us. And you know, basically we support you. Yes, if the school wants the program, we'll financially support you and thank you very much.
Yeah, I, I think that's a great way of putting it. So maybe we'll have you after Gordon goes here. Councilor Gordon, you're up.
Yeah, I echo the sentiment that John just mentioned here. If they, if there is a request from the schools, as Cindy has indicated, it doesn't look like they will be. The letter indicates that they have not sent in the request for this coming year or for the past year. Just wondering, this, I, I totally agree with this kind of an initiative. I hate drug abuse and quite often the soft drugs that are available are the entry to the harder drugs. There's a lot of data that backs that up. So I fully support a program like this. I'm just wondering, and for those of you with more knowledge of these kind of programs, two things, a question for admin, this would be through our community support grant, I presume? And then secondly, is it always, is Dare the only option to deliver this kind of education? And is it only through schools? I'm just wondering if there's a, a different medium that can be used to provide the training for our, for our children. I just, I don't know the value that it would be within the local school, as Cindy mentioned, that her, her, the principal has already indicated.
Mr. Sharp?
Sure. So the answer to the first question, I, I'm not sure if we pay for this out of the community grant support fund. I believe it's a baseline budget item in the amount of X each year. And currently that's not reflected in our budget. It wasn't in our plan for our budget last year either. So as I talk it through, let me correct myself. It's not through the support fund program. It's a separate line item. With respect to whether there's a better, more suitable project, I, I don't know if I want to speculate that. We're not in that program delivery area. So whether, whether I have a better option for council to invest in or not at this time, I really wouldn't want to speculate.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. Any follow up? Gordon, before I go back to Waring for rescinding the motion and rephrasing?
No, there's, there's got to be a real definitive reason why the schools aren't suggesting they come in. I'm a big fan of bang for the buck and proper education in its right place. I mean, we have a school superintendent on our, a former school superintendent on our, on our council. So maybe Councilor Rob can, can speak to the value or the lack of the value of such training in a school environment. I'm not sure that that's the best place for this form of training, though I fully support this training.
Go ahead, Councilor Rad.
I thank you very much for that promotion. As far as I ever got as a principalship, actually, one year at central office, but thank you anyway. As I said, I, I was familiar with the Dare program when I was a principal, actually, and I think it was a good program. That said, it has, you know, has maybe has to do with course. I don't know, but my point is that I don't really see this as an official request and I'm not sure the school really wants it for the, you know, they, they should know best what's best for their kids, the schools and the parents. So I'm going to wait for an official request, I think. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Waring, can we make a friendly amendment? And it would be rather than what you stated earlier, that council agreed to support the Dare program if there is a request from the school to hold the sessions and then it can come back. So we can remove the monetary, just keep it as supported if the request comes back for school sessions.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, that's perfectly good.
Okay, excellent. That way they'll come back in front of us and we'll know definitively what they are doing, how they're doing it and so on. If they have a proper presentation, I think it would be good for PR and good for us, background knowledge as well, how good a program like this is, what it entails, what it covers and so on. So. Okay, so that's a friendly amendment that council agrees to support the Dare program if there is a request from the school to hold the sessions. And that would be it. Any further comments? Nope, seeing none. All in favor? And that's carried. Thank you. All right. Committee board minutes and correspondence. So we're slowly counting down here. Two items left to go. First one, 15.1 Sheep River Intermunicipal Library. That is the minutes for July 8th. And I'll point out on there, the only thing of serious interest that we've done on the library board is we approved a 1.7% COLA for the board employees effective July 1st. So that's the only thing on there. We didn't do it last year, so this was, this was this year and we did it at July 1st. That's about it. Other than that, it's business as usual. We're back at the library. Programs are going to start getting geared up here. And I was really happy to hear that Literacy for Life is, I got some life breath back in it at High River. Of course, our library was already continuing that program. So it's good to see it back again. More information to follow on that. Any questions? Okay, good. That's just information. So I'll make the motion to adopt the minutes of the July 28, 2020 library board. All in favor? Right, we got Cindy up here. Yeah, okay, go ahead, Councilor Halliday.
Yeah, I just wanted to know if there's any talk about what the closure did as far as our, our requisitions, you know, the financial impact on not being open. If there's any talk about that. And I'll apologize that the 34 boxes of books were probably half of my kids. So thank the library staff for their awesome jobs.
Yeah, we, we actually just had a meeting last week, I believe it was. So we're starting our budget discussions. The executive are going through the numbers last week and this week. So our next meeting, we will have a full budget discussion to get our first glimpse. So we're, we're looking good. However, to answer your question, there's three months that we were down. And we fully expect to see that coming back into the budget as a presentation of what happened, what was removed, what we can do with those reserve funds and what the implications will be moving into this budget year. So. So yeah, so we'll get the, the fine tooth information for you probably next month for sure. Okay. Any other questions? We're good. All right. All in favor of accepting for information? Thank you. That's carried. And Municipal Planning Commission, Councilors Hamilton, Halliday and Wilkie. Who do we have? Councilor Gordon. Go ahead, Councilor Gordon.
Yeah, before we go into this, I'm just wondering if there's any update from the MPC side of things regarding the RBC building and if you've seen anything come across your desk for that?
Okay, who wants to field the, I think Chair Deputy Mayor Hamilton can answer that question.
Hi, we haven't seen anything recently on that yet, Jonathan. There was there was an application, quite a few. I don't even remember when now. It's been a while. Councilor Halliday or Wilkie, if you've got anything on that, let me know. But there were, for renovations inside the building, it would, it, but we haven't seen anything in the recent future. What we did have, we didn't have any meetings in July, nothing in August. We just had a meeting last week. We had two applications. One was for signage for the Diamond Valley Early Learning Center and that was approved. And then the other was a development extension on the Tennis Court lands. They asked for an additional year on that. So no, I don't have an update for you on the RBC building. Maybe Councilors Wilkie or Halliday do, but I'm not. Nothing's coming to mind.
Okay, thank you for that, Deputy Mayor Hamilton. We'll go to Councilor Wilkie, please.
Yeah, I was just going to say that from a development permit perspective, it was approved. So from an MPC perspective, it was approved for the changes required. There may be additional changes required for signage or anything like that, but I would, so, so if there's any holdup, it would be on, on the permitting side of things, which I would, I would have to defer to Mr. Sharp, who may have to defer to Ms. Ulette, who is not here. But I, I haven't, we haven't seen anything at the commission on that.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, just FYI, I asked this question earlier in the week. And it has been approved, like I say, through development and they have eight to 12 months to complete the work. Basically, that's where they're at. So yeah, I look forward to a new post office. Regarding the actual minutes here, June 17th, does anyone have anything regarding those minutes that they wish to point out? If not, I'll take a motion to adopt for information. Councilor Wilkie, excellent. All in favor? Excellent. Thank you. That's carried. Well, that concludes our very first Zoom meeting, fully virtual. Town and Turner Valley, September 21st, 2020 meeting. As always, be safe, be kind and be courteous. Okay, guys? We will talk to you later. Thank you for attending. We are adjourned. Take care.
Thank you.